All right, Dr. Maleko, would you like to go back to your items?
Yes, and I believe Dr. Chokel may have some parapros that are here for recognition.
So Executive Director Asalee, I believe, is in the room and is going to approach.
Good evening. I'm going to ask all our wonderful paras to come up. I wish we could have them all here today, but we have, I think, about 200 para-professionals in our department alone, so we really would have needed some overflow rooms then.
We've got another group behind you, Mr. Asalee. There we go.
Okay. All right. Greetings, President Thorpe, Superintendent Maleko, and trustees. It gives me great honor to be up here right now recognizing our dedicated special education para-professionals. Here's just some background information. All of them come through a process to become a special education para, and part of that process is an interview. During the interview, one of my favorite questions always to ask is, if we were to ask people who have worked with you in the past, which what are your greatest strengths are, what do you think they would say? So since I've worked with so many of them, I'm going to kind of answer this question on their behalf right now, and I apologize. The first word that comes to mind is unconditional love for the students that they service, no matter what happens. Other words, patience, they're selfless, they're collaborative, they're knowledgeable, they're caring, they're difference makers, and finally, they're the backbone. They're the backbone of so many students and families that they service. These are just a few words to describe our great paras. So on behalf of our district and our community, we would like to thank all of our para-professionals in the district. Obviously, you see a few of them are here today with me. The first question they ask is, do I have to say anything? I told them only if you're comfortable, so right now I'm going to open it up. Does anyone want to say anything at all, or before Ms. Modica comes up?
Just say their names.
Okay, outstanding. So we have Cheryl over here from How School. We also have Nima from How School as well. We have Ms. Fawaz here as well. We have Ms. Tullid here as well. We have Ms. Ankuni here as well, and then we have Ms. Badun here as well. So thank you all for everything that you guys do and the great impact that you make. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to honor our GSRP para-professionals, which I brought with me. There were supposed to be seven of them tonight. Two of them couldn't make it. These women behind me have been in our program anywhere from 18 years to 23 years helping our most at-risk preschool families. To describe what our para-professionals do could take me hours if I listed all their duties and unique responsibilities. However, since we don't have hours, I will just do my best to share just some of their amazing work. Each one of these women behind me use their talents to help our four-year-old students discover their own self and become lifelong learners. They dedicate their time and energy each day to assure families and students that our schools have a learning environment that is safe and healthy and a place for students to grow, to be productive learners and problem solvers. For many of our families, our teachers and para-professionals in GSRP are the first impression of Dearborn Public Schools. These ladies and the other 33 in the district now, because we're at 38, they are co-teachers, translators, presenters at parent meetings, mentors to new staff members, a support system for families, resource providers, technology problem solvers now because due to COVID, they got really good. They assist with over 600 pre-K registrations and so much more. And most importantly, they are imagination creators. They have the best dinosaur voices, amazing pretend cooking skills, Lego builders, and early literacy and math skills teachers. Each day is unique, and they will never know what to expect, but they are always willing to help in any way they can, and they do it with a smile on their face and love in their heart. There's a quote that says, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and insists that they become the best they can possibly be." All of our 38 GSRP para-professionals are champions for our students, and we appreciate what they do. And I forgot to introduce them. Hold on. I'm sorry. I forgot. We have Adella Abdella. She's at Cotter with us. Lumadara, who's also at Cotter. Kadija Hamadi, who is at Henry Ford. Gada Abdella, who is at William Ford. And Kadija...
Fatma.
I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness, Fatma Badun, who's at Cotter, too. My nerves are stuck in me. I'm so sorry.
Thank you very much. Trustee Watts.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention a para-pro. I met her daughter this summer, and she, the daughter, just glowed about her mom. And her mom is a para-pro, and I don't remember the school, but she's in Ms. Tru's class, and her name is Mervett Hamka. So if she is watching, her daughter is very proud of her and speaks so highly about how much her mom loves her job. And the other thing I wanted to know, and I know they already left the podium, of how many of the teachers who have gone home was toys still in their pockets. Because I think with GSRP teachers and para-pro, so often I found myself with pockets full of toys. So just a comment there. Thank you.
Trustee Mosz.
I just want to appreciate this. You know, I said this last time, they're one of the most underpaid and underappreciated segment of our employees, and they do so much for our students and for the families, make the families feel at ease and help the teachers at all times. I've seen their work whenever I visit schools. So I thank each one of them for all that they do, and for sure, they're not in it for the money, and they definitely have the unconditional love. So thank you once again.
Dr. Maleko, your next item.
Okay, okay. So I'll just continue along. So just again, recognizing the para-pros, I appreciate them as well and the great work. And what we're going to do is every month, we're going to have different classifications of our employees come up and recognize them for the great work, because it does take a village to make a difference for students. And I know that they're doing the work every day in the classroom with students. So I wanted to mention a couple of things, too, just to close out. Mr. Wall, I appreciate it. Mr. Ranny. So any of the things that are in the contract, like exemptions for being competitive, to bring teachers in at different steps, was negotiated. So we had to give up compensation to the full union in order to get those things. So I just want everyone to kind of be aware, for example, 3% this year and 3% next year. And they should. They deserve it. And, you know, we've done other things like Personal Business Days and other things, and we're still willing to sit down and talk to the union. We are going to do that. So I just wanted to mention that as well. I do want to mention something that's kind of a negative, and it's this social media TikTok challenge thing that is going on. I talked to President Thorpe about it. I've heard about it, and I want to, it's a national situation, is my understanding. And really, they're challenging students to do damage to property and to other students. So I just want to caution students to stay away from that, to parents, to, you know, social media is a technology that can be positive, but it can be negative. And if we're engaging in things that are negative and damaging property, it's not a positive. So we will implement the full force of the student code of conduct if we determine any of our students are engaged in this. But again, this is disturbing. Channel 7 actually interviewed me on our count day, but then they also talked about this, because it's this national movement of destroying property and doing things that are not positive. I also want to remind students, too, and everyone, that, you know, today's day and age, once you do something, it never goes away. It's there on video. It's taped. And it could, you know, I know, for example, we do background checks on Google to see what's going on with me hired employees. So people need to really be careful and not make mistakes that are going to harm students and harm the school district. So I did want to mention that. On a positive, I do want to mention that with the vaccines, we will continue to promote them, and we now know that some of our staff are eligible for the booster if they had Pfizer, and we believe that Moderna is coming soon, along with Johnson and Johnson. And I sent out an email to staff regarding that. We also are hearing that eventually vaccines may be available for those under 12, and so we'll continue to monitor that. And I know that we've run many vaccine clinics in our schools, and we will continue to do that and to support the betterment, given the COVID situation that we're all dealing with, that we're all tired of. And the vaccines, to me, are the best way to get ahead of this pandemic and get out of the pandemic. And so that is everything that I have, but we will continue to mitigate and do what we think is right to protect our students and keep students in school.
All right. Additional questions for Dr. Maleko. Trustee Mosz.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko. I actually received my booster shot, since I'm an employee, and I was eligible to take it. And I appreciate all of the scientists that have produced this vaccine that is, right now, being this pandemic. We hope that's the case. It seems like it's doing great effort in reducing cases. So there was some kind of a mandate by the federal government about employers who have more than 100 employees to be fully vaccinated. Dr. Maleko, can you speak if that, if school districts are included in that mandate?
So school districts, my understanding, are likely included, but we don't have concrete direction on that yet. The Michigan MiOSHA would be the one that would oversee that, and we would need a direction from them. And then it is likely that school districts will be part of that mandate. But again, I don't have 100% confirmation on that. We've talked to, we have many legal opinions that it may be coming in the future, but it will be up to the MiOSHA organization, who is the governing body of health and safety in the workplace, to make that determination under the Biden order.
Trustee Pelichkov.
Just to add for the audience's information, the state of Michigan is holding a free COVID walk-in vaccination at the Henry Ford Centennial Library this week, tomorrow until Saturday, from 9:00 until 7:00 p.m. No appointments are necessary. It is the Pfizer vaccine only. And enter through the West Entrance if you're interested in getting one. My understanding is whether it's your first dose or a booster, the Pfizer vaccine dosage is the same, no matter what. So you don't, you just go in and tell them what it is you need and show your vaccination card if you're looking for the booster, and it's for children 12 and up. But children do need their parent to sign a consent form.
Trustee Barry.
Dr. Maleko, I don't have a question, but I have a recommendation. Just like we bring the students here to lead us in the pledge allegiance every meeting, I'm going to recommend that you bring Ms. Katie here every meeting to help us, remind us why we're here. So I want to take another opportunity to say thank you. That was a very, very well-thoughtful comment, so appreciate you.
Additional questions for Dr. Maleko? All right, next item.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
We have students coming up to do our commendations this month. We're getting back to one of our old traditions.
Hello, my name is Hussein Leila. I'm a senior at Fortson High School. Here are the commendations for the district. Commendations to the numerous departments and staff members who came together to help launch the first year of the Dearborn Public Schools Virtual K-12 School. Commendations to secretarial staff in the superintendent's office for organizing supplies and students, to the long elementary secretaries for helping out until the program has its own secretary, staff and student services and computer applications for helping with student placements in the program, the many virtual K-12 teachers who helped with distributions, and many others who assisted with getting the new online school up and running. Commendations to Dr. Jill Chokel, Executive Director, and Mr. Majid Fadallah, Director of Early College Schools, who co-presented with Dr. Glenn Maleko at the September Wayne Reeser Board of Education meeting. The team did an outstanding job during the presentation on the early college schools and summer programs. Wayne Reeser Superintendent, Dr. Davida Colbert, commented on the team's performance, saying, "Team Dearborn rocks." The presentation was spot-on. A true walk of the Michigan blueprint of for-comprehensive student recovery in action. The team lifted so many high-leverage, so many high-leverage actions that yield improved student outcomes. Thanks for leading the way. Commendations to our food service staff for their teamwork and optimism as they deal with ongoing supply chain issues. The department has been hit hard by issues such as missing products and late or canceled deliveries, sometimes on short notice. Kitchen managers have had to move quickly to change plans, and the management team has been busy providing product and support to the kitchens. It has been awesome to see staff at all levels come together to ensure students get fed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Esma Idi. I'm a senior at Fortson High School. Here are the commendations for our high school. Congratulations to Etzel Ford Soccer Captain Murad Mohammed for receiving the MLive Metro Detroit Athlete of the Week, not once but twice this fall. Murad scored 31 goals in the first 15 games of the season.
Which is a record.
Which is a record. Commendations to some of our high school seniors who recently were recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program. The district had four commended students recognized by the program, including Leila Kasim from Fortson High School, and Jack Wahab, Caleb Gothro, and Daifif Jawad from Dearborn High. These students placed among the top 50,000 students across the country who voluntarily took the PSAT-NMSQT in the fall of their junior year. The district also had two National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, Glenn Warren of Dearborn High and Jordan Boyce from Etzel Ford High. These students placed among the top 16,000 students across the country, putting them in an elite group that includes less than 1% of the high school seniors in the United States. Commendations to former McCullough Yunus and Fortson High student Adam Dibb, who is now composing music for Hollywood films such as Disney and Lego. Dibb has also played with some big-name jazz artists as a saxophonist, received his music and biology degrees at Wayne State University, and finished film school in Chicago. Moving on to the elementary commendations, commendations to Principal Amy Modica and the team of GSRP teachers, including parent liaison Nadia Berry, and the Cotter office staff for the outstanding work in registering 608 families for preschool classrooms this fall. Appreciation also to the operations team for their work in preparing new classrooms for students, and to HR for supporting the recruitment and staffing. Sincere thanks to the building administrators at River Oaks, Lori Oakman, Henry Ford, McCullough Yunus, Gear Park, and Salina Intermediate for being so welcoming of their new preschool students. Thanks as well to food service, transportation, and all others who were involved in the team effort to open six new classrooms. Commendations to Kathy Hartling, purchasing agent, for her great work and effort in assisting the GSRP program. She spent extra time making sure that all purchase orders and other documents were completed and updated, allowing materials to arrive on time. Like so many, Kathy has stepped up during these extraordinary times and demonstrated her leadership and skills. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Mosz.
President Thorpe, I have additional commendations. Often, we do celebrate wins and awards, and I was at two different games the last two weeks where we actually had losses. Our teams lost. Fortson lost for the first time to Belleville football team. But I recognize the grace and leadership by the coaches, the head coach, and his assistants, as well as the loss at Etzel Ford soccer team. If they won, they would have won the league title back-to-back. But I also appreciate the grace and leadership of their coach, Mr. Badun, and the amount of respect that his players give him. So commendations to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is acknowledgement of donations. May some alley-bats.
Good evening. A donation of $199.95 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a digital platform for language skills. A donation of $65 has been offered to Hague Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for shelves for organization. A donation of $157 has been offered to Hague Elementary School, also by the Dearborn Education Foundation, for the use of organizational tubs. A donation of 500,000 disposable masks, 40,000 KN95 masks, and other PPE items have been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the state of Michigan to be distributed to each school.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, Finance Committee meeting, September 13, 2021, Board Report 21-28, Regular P-12 meeting, September 13, 2021, Board Report 21-29, Policy Committee meeting, September 16, 2021, Board Report 21-30. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Motion was made by Trustee Barry, supported by Trustee Dambrojo. Any corrections in the minutes? All right, I see none. Could I please have a roll call vote?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosz, yes. Trustee Pelichkov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes.
Next item, we skipped, obviously, special reports. We're going to come back to it. Some citizen participation, citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action can submit a virtual blue card that will be posted on the district's website on Monday, October 11, 2021, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., or in person by 7:00, 10:00 p.m. by submitting a blue card to the board secretary. The board might not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, please do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. So I have...
Before you get started, Trustee Pelichkov.
Yes, thank you for giving me a moment. We have continued to accept virtual blue cards as an option, and I think it's a wise choice to do. But at the last board meeting, there was a comment made by an individual who came up to participate that I found a mischaracterization of the citizen participation, and she called the written comments that we read from teachers a sham. I find that unacceptable, as we represent the entire community, including our staff, and they have just as much right as anyone else to present us with their thoughts and concerns. And I neglected to say something that evening, and I wanted to clarify once again that we value input from everyone in the community. It's called citizen participation, not parents' participation or student participation. And that's because we have a responsibility to take into consideration when we make decisions, everyone's thoughts, everyone's concerns. And that's how we make a balanced decision with competing needs that we are challenged with on a regular basis. And I just wanted to be, to assure everyone that all of your thoughts have value to us, and none of them are a sham in my eyes.
Before Trustee Mosz starts calling up people that are going to do comments in person, what I do want to let everyone know is that I did set a timer. Apologies, but I'm assuming we've got somewhere between 70 and 80 comments that we're going to have to go through between virtual and in-person. So we'd really appreciate if you could keep your comments under three minutes. The timer will go off at 2:45, and I'll just ask you if you could please start to summarize. So Trustee Mosz, if you want to bring up our first...
Sure. The first, all of the blue cards, at least, I have them on non-agenda items. So I kind of shuffled them, so I apologize if you submitted your blue card early, and you are not being called early as well. So Ms. Kathy Martin of Dearborn Heights would like to address the board and speak on colleagues' appreciation.
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Maleko. My name is Kathy Martin, and I have been a speech-language pathologist in Dearborn for 19 years. During this time, I have worked alongside some amazing and inspirational educators. I also have two children who attend Dearborn schools. I'm here to publicly thank some colleagues and a couple of my son's teachers for everything they have done for students over the past 18 months. Emmy Dionisopoulos is a speech-language pathologist who works part-time, but she was putting in full-time hours to service all of her students during the shutdown. Anastasia Pelz is another speech-language pathologist. She was driving to students' homes to drop off packets, and she was even doing articulation therapy on students' porches. Erin Erickson is an occupational therapist who spends her own money on projects such as planting flowers and arts and crafts to keep students motivated while they work on their fine motor skills. Jennifer Lawl, one of the best social workers I've ever worked with, volunteered her time and resources to run an after-school program leading up to the shutdown. She also has provided families with resources such as food, clothing, cars, even financial assistance for those who are late on rent. Ryan Pichay is not a colleague, but he was my son's teacher during virtual learning, and he managed to connect with my son in a way I had never seen before. Thanks to him, my son learned to like school during a very difficult time, and he was even excited to go to hybrid learning. I never thought I'd see the day when he willingly woke up for school. Deanna Furlow, who also taught my son, Deena, sorry, Deena Furlow, who also taught my son during virtual learning. When I asked him how school was going, he looked at me and smiled, and I asked him how math was, because that's not his favorite subject, and he goes, "You know what? I can't imagine a better math teacher. The material's dry, but she makes it easy to understand." And that just warmed my heart. These are merely a few of the many amazing educators we have in Dearborn, and the difference they make in families' lives every day is remarkable. I hope the board understands how vital these veteran staff are to this district. They have worked tirelessly to ensure that we keep students first. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Thorpe, are we going to, can we respond to individual comments, or do we want to wait?
Let's wait till we get through everything.
Okay, sure. Well, yeah, we'll wait until Ms. Martin's here. Thank you. Next comment is value of teachers. That's the address from Ms. Amira Saidi of Dearborn.
I've timed it, so we've got about 11 seconds over. My name is Amira Saidi. I am one of the founders of Maya Justice, a grassroots advocacy group that aims to protect our public schools from privatization. I am also a founding member of MYCORE, the Michigan Caucus of Rank and File Educators, a statewide social justice union advocacy group. I'm here today not only as a teacher, but also as a concerned parent of Dearborn students and a lifelong Dearborn resident. I am concerned with how teachers are being talked about in these meetings. Our teachers are heroes, full stop. Like grocery, restaurant, and medical workers, teachers were expected to bear a greater workload than ever before during the pandemic. Teachers who had their own school-age kids at home needed support, needed to support their own children through school, as well as working harder than ever to adjust to the new challenges of teaching remotely. Likewise, teachers had to support parents who found themselves having to become instructional support staff at home during COVID while managing their own jobs and life demands. Nothing was perfect, nothing was ideal, and nothing was easy. We were in this together. We can all share the recognition of having survived months, going on years, that demanded we lean on one another. COVID has proven that we are an interconnected society, and that truly, no man is an island. Our words carry weight. In the same way, we cannot attack nurses or doctors or waitstaff and expend, expect blind allegiance, we cannot attack our teachers and disrespect their loyalty and expect any human being with dignity to stick around in these professions indefinitely. We, as educators, can take constructive critiques. This is quite literally built into our jobs. But I do not want the teachers who have loved my son up for the first year of school and those yet to come to quit because our community and district failed to see their value. Last year, my son entered kindergarten knowing only two of his letters in English. I saw his teachers lovingly welcome him every morning. I heard his teachers sing songs that built his literacy and numeracy skills. They met with me and answered any and all questions I had about his progress and struggles. His specials teachers built his love of art and music, and they did this all virtually on a brand-new platform we all had to learn. By the end of the year, my son was not only quizzing me on math problems, can't stand math, and sketching portraits of his Transformers, but we also, he was also reading whole books to me. For people who know how difficult it is to teach a child to read in person, let alone virtually, they would no doubt not only call these teachers heroes... let alone virtually, they would no doubt not only call these teachers heroes, they would call them miracle workers. Furthermore, teachers who found themselves strapped in time and finances last year came together numerous times to support students and their families who had fallen on extremely hard times. One group of teachers fundraised money for families who had their main income earners pass away, even murdered. Another group of teachers heard about families who couldn't afford food and came together to donate hundreds of dollars in Kroger gift cards to several homes. Even as some teachers find themselves brought to the brink financially and emotionally, they find the time, empathy, and solidarity to be a safety net for our community. I hope you see this room filled with educators, parents, and community members who want to stay in Dearborn, and many of whom have had their own children in this district, so their investment and commitment here is multi-pronged. I want us to collectively work together to make this not only the greatest district for students, but the greatest district for teachers. Let's value our teachers in every sense of the word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next comment is from Samra Lukman of Dearborn, and she would like to address the board on hiring practices.
Hi, my name is, excuse me, my name is Samra Lukman, Sam Lukman. I'm so sick of the nepotism in this district that we all know about. We all do. Parents, students, counselors, teachers, administrators, we all know about it. $60 million of taxpayer dollars. You are supposed to be accountable for every penny spent. With the superintendent's $200,000 salary, his cabinet each making over $100,000, you are supposed to be checking him, his salary, his HR director, and their hiring practices, who they hire and why. We already know that Dearborn Public Schools hires whoever they want, their friends, their family, whoever buys them the most baclava trays or puts up the Facebook posts that get the most likes. Two people got hired last month at $80,000, making more than somebody who's worked here for 15 years, took a five-year pay freeze, and remained loyal, even had a master's degree, and all because they were related to or knew someone in the administration. As a person who personally comes from a family of educators, I've personally seen family members leave DPS and refuse to come back specifically because of this culture of hiring practices. You may say there's a teacher shortage, but teacher shortages do not result or explain 15 teachers personally reaching out to me in the last month alone as an advocate with letters of dissatisfaction and discuss with this district and administration. Teacher shortages do not result in an entire city's rejection of bond proposals to this district and a flat rejection of your handling of our monies. There's a pattern of nepotism, self-dealings, cronyism based on who you know, not what you know. So not only is this unfair, but you've brought, hired, and promoted less qualified people into positions thereby putting your relationships before my child's education. Moreover, I've been told over and over of a toxic environment in the school system. Today alone, I've spoken to multiple people who speak about being bullied or targeted when they speak out, being called ineffective, a culture of fear to the employees, that you could be moved, be called into disciplinary meetings, or have your workload increased. Let's audit the students in the STEM special programs and see how many of them have relationships to the staff and administration of DPS when it was supposed to be taxpayer dollars spent to low-income families. Who are you to pick and choose who gets jobs or which students go into programs in Dearborn Public Schools when our tax dollars are supposed to be spent in fairness and equality? And the result, my kids have to be taught by long-term subs that barely have certificates. Our city's foundation is the school systems. And if you created an environment of corruption where a teacher literally got up and walked out of a classroom and said, "I quit," what does that say? My understanding is that after being mismanaged all these years, now there's talks about increasing teachers' pay, but you're also going to be increasing class sizes. So let me get this straight. Our kids are gonna suffer with increased class sizes, increased workloads on already disgruntled teachers, and you're doing absolutely nothing about the toxic culture that created the problem in the first place. Dearborn used to be the elite, the creme de la creme, the cream of the crop, but due to unethical hiring practices, your nepotism, your self-interest, you ran the district into the ground. And now you've broken public trust. Dearborn residents emphatically spoke and said they don't want to give you any more money to help our schools because they don't trust you. And in turn, that hurts my property values. I'm a mother, I'm a product, I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer. I'm standing in solidarity with the teachers and asking the board to fix this right now. Enough is enough, the fish rots from the head down. And since the fox can't guard the hen house, perhaps it's time to bring in an outside firm to investigate the toxic culture that your administration has created. And if I'm wrong, tell me you don't know who the next coach of Atso Ford High School's basketball team will be when this coach retires. Prove me wrong. Thank you.
Next comment is from, next comment is from Faiza Nasser, of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board about teacher morale.
Good evening. My name is Faiza Nasser. I was a school social worker who recently resigned from Dearborn Public Schools. First and foremost, I want to express that it was a privilege and honor to have worked with best staff, students, and families at Dearborn Public Schools. However, I'm here today in solidarity with my former colleagues and feel inclined to clear my conscience, to make you aware, and help you understand many reasons that have led many staff members to resign, including myself. A while ago, an exit letter was read to the board, and a comment from a district administrator struck myself and other employees as dismissive and insensitive when they stated that it was a disgruntled case. So here are some reasons of why people are leaving this district. One, disrespect to loyal staff with seniority, in many ways including most recent pay discrepancies to retain current employees. Two, lack of professionalism. For example, that HR email during the summer about the pay. Even though I did not work in the summer program, that tone and message in the email sent by HR left me feeling very disappointed and discouraged to continue working in this district, whereas we are a restorative district, and I did not see any apology or any ways to restore the relationship in that message. Three, lack of trust among many professionals when it comes to evaluations and placements for students with special needs. Four, lack of forethought in terms of special ed department. They do not plan ahead. They were well informed that at school, we'll no longer have two full-time social workers in June. However, they did not fill the position until October. By doing that, we are setting up our school, students, and staff to fail. Five, fear culture. Those who have spoken up have been reprimanded behind closed doors. Six, the stories I've heard about the hoops inexperienced, the hoops that an IEP team has to go through to place a student in the least restricted placement is an understatement. Seven, the amount of subbing in unnecessary roles that we are put, that are put on our plates and prevent us from serving high-needs students and at-risk students, including lunch duties. Eight, when the input of staff is sought, it is through committees that are structured in a way where educators cannot provide authentic feedback, input, or planning, and it feels very unwelcoming as well. Therefore, to conclude, my main reason for resigning is to be able to come to this podium to discuss these issues and concerns from a different role, a concerned resident, a concerned parent, and a professional, because I felt limited as an employee. From working at Dearborn for six full years, I felt that Dearborn has moved to a top-down management style, as if it's a business. The top experts are making decisions on how things are done. They are telling staff what to do, when to do, when to do it, leaving no room for autonomy, creativity, and instilling a love for teaching and learning. These are administrators who have left the classroom and become disconnected over the years, and at the end of the day, decisions are impacting our students and staff. And a lot of people are left out of the decision-making, and these are people that are experts in their fields.
Could you please close?
I'm sorry?
Could you make your closing comment, please?
Yep. So school professionals need compassion, need to be trusted, need fair competitive pay compared to other districts, because I assure you, as we speak, there are many staff members who are already in the process or begin the process to explore other options because there are better options out there. What I ask you to do as a district board is to encourage the district to create an effective and transparent staff advisory or focus group to be more inviting to address the concerns of your staff before it gets worse and leads to further impact on our students.
Thank you.
Next comment is from Ms. Jessica Havala of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board about teachers.
Hello. Hello, so my name is Jessica Havala, and I stand with the teachers. I want accountability for the admission and our students, and put these kids first. They deserve it the most. Thank you.
Thanks. Next comment is by Mrs. Joanne Nebha of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board about teachers leaving the district.
Good evening, board. Sorry. I think what has been said is what I was gonna come up here and say, and I'm just really disappointed to just hear everything that's being said. In my school alone, we had 11 teachers leave. So as a parent, I've been in this city for the past 15 years. I'm really disappointed in the way, in the direction that this district is going. You, as a board, need to start holding this administration accountable. As citizens, parents, I have been reached out to by teachers who have left this district, teachers in this district, parents from every part of this city, every part of this city. And people are disgusted, and they want accountability, and we need that. We love this city, and we love this district. We wouldn't be here if we didn't. So when we are really upset with something we love, it's because we want to see change, okay? So please, listen to these teachers, listen to these community members. They are speaking truth. And if I go back and just repeat what people are saying, it's wasting people's time. You've heard it, make it happen. We need accountability. Thank you.
If you don't mind, what school?
Thanks.
I'm not putting schools out there, but-
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next comment is from Ms. Katie Borallo, but she already addressed us.
Okay.
Thank you, once again. Next comment is Mr. Ramzi Ashohti, he would like, of Dearborn, would like to address the board on teachers' appreciation.
My name is Ramzi Ashohti, and I am a Dearborn resident and parent to three Dearborn Public School students. I want to talk about the impact that teachers have had on my children throughout the COVID pandemic, during the pandemic. I watched my kids' teachers go out of their way to help them adjust. When schools shut down suddenly in March 2020, my daughter Maria's anxiety skyrocketed. Her first-grade teachers, Ms. Locke and Ms. Baydun, made video calls to ease her fears and check in. They sent her videos of them reading stories because she missed their storytimes and sent text messages whenever she needed them. Last year, Ms. Harriet Maria's second-grade teacher helped her adjust to online learning, supported her through difficulties, and provided extra reteaching when she needed it. Mrs. Harriet instilled a love of science in my daughter and continued to check in with us over the summer. Last year, my son Elias's fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Leana Fawani, built an unbelievable connection with him, which made him love school again. She kept him engaged and interested, and his reading skills jumped up two grade levels, a testament to the work she did with him. He talked often about how much he loved his teacher and how she made him feel loved and a part of the class. My older daughter Anissa's teachers at Eunice Middle School have been phenomenal. Last school year, they provided her with learning labs whenever she needed, answered emails after hours, even late at night, gave her flexibility when she was overwhelmed, and helped her feel a sense of normalcy during uncertain times. My family is forever grateful for the love, empathy, and understanding that teachers have shown our kids. Educators worked harder than anyone and helped my family through an unbelievable, unbelievable time. We have the most selfless and dedicated teachers, and it showed through the pandemic. My wife and I thank all of them from the bottom of our hearts. Now I see board report after board report with high numbers of resignations. I worry that our district is focusing on recruiting new hires and not on retaining the teachers that put the district on their backs during COVID. I don't want my kids to lose on the experienced and loyal teachers that sacrificed for our students during the pandemic. These educators take care of our kids. Now it's time for the district to take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next comment is from Mrs. Leslie Windlass of Dearborn Heights, would like to address the board on fair wages and equity.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Leslie Windlass, and I wear many hats. But tonight, I'm speaking as a community activist in solidarity with teachers who work for Dearborn Public Schools. There are many things that I could, that I could and want to say about the topic of fair wages and equity, but I'm choosing to focus on the courage it takes to speak up. It takes an immense amount of bravery to speak up in a public platform such as this one, despite the notion that there will be backlash and subtle retaliation. I want to take some of my time to say kudos to anyone who's ever had to stand up for what they believed was right. I, for one, would have regretted not being here tonight if I let the fear of criticism, retaliation, or anything of that nature stand in my way. Teachers are heroes. They stay here because they love what they do, and more importantly, they love who they do it for. They stayed through a pandemic for the same reason: love. I'm sorry, friend, but in the words of Tina Turner, "What's love's got to do with it?" You can't pay bills with love, and you sure cannot put love in front of a classroom unattended to teach all day. If there are wage insecurities, address them. If there are teachers coming in making more than their predecessors, fix it. Don't make the mistake of underestimating the impact Lord Morrell has on children. These heroes teach every day. Our teachers deserve fair wages, so they aren't making 80 cents on the dollar compared to other professionals with their same credentials. Our teachers deserve fair wages, so they aren't working two or three jobs just to make ends meet. Our teachers deserve fair wages, so they don't have to choose between the profession they love and their household financial need. Not only do they deserve fair wages, but they are worthy of their voice being heard. As a person who has shared, who has shed her fear of retaliation, criticism, the what-else scenarios, the angry, the being labeled as an angry black woman, I'm gonna say it loud and proud for those who can't. Teachers are heroes in the face of being underpaid and overworked. Give them their flowers and their praise right now, along with being economically beneficial to them while they're alive. As you look out into the crowd and see this red, you can feel the burn, the heat, the fever, whatever you need to address their concerns. Last, but certainly not least, Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. Let us all learn the lesson from the exploitation of our native people and people in general. Thank you.
Next comment is from Mrs. Linda Lilly of Epsilanti, would like to address the board on coworker recognition.
Good evening. My name is Linda Lilly, and I'm one of the 12 occupational therapists in the district. I'm also a prom member of DFT 681, Cotter Building Union Rep, and a member of Special Education Advocacy Movement Caucus. This is my 17th year in the district, and I continue to learn and grow as a professional in the district due to challenges I have encountered, amazing special education and general education staff I have worked with, and personal motivation. Over the years, I have worked with students or have attended IEPs in every school in this district. I have seen many changes occur, some good and not some so great. However, tonight, I want to focus on some people who have helped shape the special education department and are truly making a difference for our students and families. As one of the three senior OTs in the department, I have had the pleasure to mentor some amazing therapists in the district. As a mentor, you develop a relationship that goes beyond the school environment, and it becomes a reciprocal learning experience for both the mentee and mentor. I have learned just as much from them as their mentor, as they have from me. There are three occupational therapists within the department who I want to acknowledge and say thank you. One, who I mentored previously, and two, I am currently mentoring: Margaret Medlin, Sarah Groen, and Andrew Mier. All three carry large caseloads, work in multiple buildings, work with some of the most complex situations, are pulled in many directions filling in to support classrooms that are short-staffed, not to mention completing countless number of evaluations to meet the rising- to meet the rising demands of our students. Between the three OTs, they cover two K through eight buildings, Lori and McCollie Eunice. Five elementary buildings, Hague, Howard, Long, Maples, Whitmore Bowls, where actually Margaret and Sarah both service students at Whitmore Bowls. One middle school, which includes Smith. One high school, Fortson, and then also Henry Ford Early College. They collectively currently provide OT services to 141 special education students and have signed evaluation consents for 32 students since the beginning of the school year. These three OTs have gone above and beyond on a daily basis. They have worked tirelessly meeting the ever-changing demands of our job during this pandemic. It's not uncommon to have after-hours conversations with these therapists to problem-solve, program-plan, and just simply collaborate on how to meet the needs of our students and families. Margaret, Sarah, and Andrea, thank you for all that you do for Dearborn Public Schools, the Special Education Department, the students, and the families. This district and our Special Education Department are better because of you. I am a better occupational therapist because of the influence that you have had on me. Thank you.
Last blue card comment is from Mrs. Stacy Hogan, she would like, of Livonia. She would like to speak to the board about special ed recognition.
Good evening. I'm standing here tonight as a former employee of Dearborn Public Schools. I worked as an occupational therapist in the Special Ed Department for 20 years. This is out of character for me and frankly uncomfortable. And the only reason I'm here is for students and staff. It will not help me. I'm not a person who likes to bring attention to problems in a public forum, but I tried. I went directly to administration and told them things that made my job impossible in hopes of changes. Not much changed. Now I'm here in front of you to make you aware and hope it will help students and current former colleagues who deserve better. I sent each of you a copy of my honest letter resignation earlier today that outlines the reasons why I left. I did this in hopes of increasing awareness and accountability of this department so that it can be addressed. Please believe me when I say this is not an isolated incident. It's not one unhappy employee. I left after countless of highly qualified and educated colleagues left, including numerous respected and dedicated OTs, social workers, psychologists, PTs, speech therapists, and others. The majority of people I know who quit left so they can get the support they need to meet the needs of students. They did not leave for more money. I'm here for the colleagues that remain that can't speak freely like I can. There are problems within this department that affect the staff and students greatly. Every school district has challenges, but the culture of the Special Ed Department is dysfunctional. This department is bleeding staff, good staff. And to the department's defense, I believe they are struggling too. This is not anything personal against Special Ed Administration. It's public knowledge that Dearborn's Director of Special Ed was given a promotion by the superintendent without the Board of Education's approval, and a move that was in his rights as the superintendent, in my, in my opinion, but not in the best interest of students. The Director of Special Ed, who already had a challenging job handling all the needs of the Special Ed students, was given even more responsibilities with that hefty pay raise. So now he has more responsibilities and a seat at the table, but does he really have a voice? If I were in this position, I would feel a certain political allegiance to the superintendent. This trickles down to the coordinator's ability to make decisions as well. Students first, right? That's the Dearborn motto. There's pictures all over the social media, but that is not, in fact, the reality that I experienced, at least not with students with special needs. They did not come first. It feels like smoke and mirrors with all the toxic positivity. I've watched these board meetings that boast all the positive things in the district and wonder, where's the attention for the Special Ed students and their needs? Staff are frustrated, exhausted, and undervalued. I'm asking you, the Board of Education, to look at this resignation data in the Special Ed Department and ask the hard questions. Why is the turnover in this department so high? Reach out to the ancillary staff and ask them for their ability to carry out their responsibilities. Don't wait for more resignations. The students deserve better. Thank you.
Ms. Hogan? I don't see any email from you today.
It's under my maiden name, which is Aller.
All right, you might want to resund it, because I'm, I'm looking, and I think this is pretty refreshing. I don't see anything.
Okay, I will resund it to make sure that you have it.
Thanks.